I met a guy, the licensed juror, the other day. He said he just got released to drive. Then I found out that the home nurse is looking for him.
He had a hole drilled in his head.
Well, he wasn't released yet.
Two feet pointing down. I don't do anything too fast.
I don't either.
I think they used a real door.
Probably did. Seriously.
Milwaukee would have been another town.
No, I bet. Gotta check the green, see if it's still a whole car.
Will the door shut?
It probably does. You don't get a, that's the problem. You don't get a real door now. You get a, they call it access hatch. It's just a little bitty hole about that big, about that high with an arm rub. And ain't for a short-legged fat man. He'll get in now, it won't work.
I'd want a door.
Yeah, yeah, for another $900, they'll send you a door for him.
There's quite a few. Michelle, are you doing the sign-in sheet or just writing them all down?
I'm just finding why he was here. Maybe I should do a sign-in sheet.
There's a much, there's a bunch in the hallway as well.
All right, I've got 10 o'clock. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate you all taking an interest in this. I know there's a lot of very strong feelings on both sides of this issue of evidence from the comments we've got as well as, as well as meetings we've had in the past. We are here today to take up and discuss the, discuss and take up the Nemo Wind Commercial Wind Energy Project Development Agreement, Road Making Agreement, and decommissioning. These are culmination of nearly three years of talks, negotiations, research, trips, study, other counties, other places that have them, other entities that dealt with them, other county officials as well as attorneys, we've looked at other states ordinances and things that make sense. I don't have the final number of all the comments that we received. There were several. Thirty-six individuals wise, there were thirty-six in support. Numerous of those came in postcard form, were duplicates, but there were thirty-five individual, thirty-six rather, sorry, as well as some written letters and emails. There were, you're seeing fifteen individuals in opposition. They threw out health sign-in letters and things like that, but, so that's where they came in. We have looked over, I have anyway, if you guys, I know you've been looking through them as well. Would you like to say anything as to the comments that we received? I've looked through the comments received. Do you have any concerns or any new issues that have been brought forward that need to be addressed?
Just the future of what's gonna be. The land is not signed up right now. If in ten years down the road they weren't built on, they can't, or kind of the windmill will be built too close to that part of theisco.
It's a good one.
Take care of it. Won't be able to build there because of turbine push too close. But that's a factor.
That is an issue, an issue you brought up. It's been brought up before as well. Have you spoke with the landowners with airports? You may have mentioned to us that you would talk with them about making something feasible for both parties.
I think, you know, the answer to the question is what we put into the agreement. We talked with the people who do the permitting for the FAA and asked them what they see as standard. What we offer is what they see as being standardable.
My main concern in there is talking with different pilots out of St. Louis in different areas that to get a plane in this area over a thousand foot would take about two miles. And I, I mean, is that... But you think they can do it in two thousand foot or?
I'm not actually answering the question on whether they can or they can't. The, there are different levels of airports with the FAA. There are some that the FAA protect, there are some that are not. If they were to register those with the FAA to meet the requirements of what the FAA protects, then that would put in different requirements. Again, I mean, we've, all of these, or these two airports were put in after we started working with you guys and submitted our layout to the FAA. So the timing on it doesn't put it in a position where we have a requirement by the FAA to do more. What we offer is what the company that we work with, Capital Airspace, set as standard when they work with airports that are not, you know, not sanctioned by the FAA.
Will these register? Want these two airport registered? They're registered, they're now. They're still not regulated by the FAA. Any further comments?
Ronnie, has anything been brought to your attention that Air E-Back lands there at Mark Twain at the corner of A and Six? And they've always landed there for many, many, many years. So that has to be taken into consideration.
Right there at Mark Twain?
Yeah.
It is a good equation because they've been there for years. I mean, that's where they landed, everybody knows it. I don't know how close the tower is gonna be, because we don't get any plans of anything.
At least 110% of the tip might have from any, any public road.
Which means helicopter can't land there.
Or property lines, as far as that goes even. I'm not sure where exactly is the, I know they land there. They have an actual helipad there, I assume. It would be registered as well.
Is that where the Mark Twain telephone?
Yes.
So there's already, what, five hundred or greater top foot tower that's right there?
No, it's taken down.
Oh, yeah, they did take it down.
Concerns?
My main concern was, is, I mean, when we met with you, we already, you know, you had that two thousand and you made a comment that you would speak with them and make something, you know, work for both parties. So that's why I didn't know where that was at. Did you speak with him or is that just?
I've spoken with Kurt Harrison. We've also talked with the landowner that farms the land. Our understanding is that Kurt Harrison doesn't have control of the property where the runway is situated. So while we did put in two thousand foot setback from it, our understanding is he doesn't have control of the runway to actually land an airplane there.
I talked to Curtis Wednesday night and he said you didn't show up at the meeting.
Yeah, that is very true.
I've talked to Curtis a couple of times on the phone. He called me at five o'clock one night, he said, "You coming to my house?" And he had never scheduled a meeting, so. But we continue to talk, talk with Curtis when he's available or when he wants to talk about things. But we've also talked with Pratt, who owns the property, and the understanding is that he doesn't have access to the property where he put the runway.
My main concern is just, there's really not, not enough setbacks there on the takeoff or landing there. They've been registered, so.
I think the setbacks need to be from the property line.
So, looking through, I did look through all the comments for and against. Honestly, most of the issues that I saw in there are things that's been brought up before in the same meetings, such as even the setbacks from the, from the property lines. The, as far as the airports go, County Commission doesn't have the authority to regulate airspace for airports. There it all boils down, I've said this many times before, to say it again, County Commission has the authority within our right of way. Beyond that, we don't. It's just the way it is. I know people don't like it, it's just the way it is. That's the law. That's the way the law is written. And that's what we have to abide by. We must abide by the law of the state of Missouri, because that's what we are sworn to do. Every unit, all of us, are taking note specifically to uphold and abide by the laws and the constitution of the state of Missouri. So we must abide by that. There were several comments that were received, questioning whether we had legal representative to look at our, look at disagreement, whether it was enforceable. I say yes, we have, multiple times. It actually spent last month bouncing back and forth between, between attorneys, working out the legal jargon. We did negotiate the biggest part of it as far as setbacks, regulations, road use and things like that without an attorney in order to save county funds, honestly, because they didn't need to be enforced and all that. We can negotiate that sort of thing ourselves and we didn't. We've done every bit of it in open session. Every bit of it. You've been allowed to be here to part of it. We've taken your comments, concerns, real time, and we've definitely applied them to this the best we can. I feel confident that we have the best commercial development agreement, road use and development, and decommissioning in the state of Missouri right now. I feel confident that this will be the base and template for the state of Missouri in March forward, that other counties will take this up. That's, that's how it's gonna end. We've shared it with others. We've got the strongest setbacks of, of any development agreement in the state of Missouri barring areas with zoning and planning. We don't have zoning and planning, so here we are. The, as far as the legal basis on this, we didn't, we didn't make these up. We didn't come off this off the top of our head. These are based off tried and true templates from other counties, other states. Our road use agreement actually is based off an Illinois model, because they have stronger road use agreements, it's much more detailed, and we felt it would address the needs and concerns of the residents much better than, than what the standard Missouri model is. We didn't take it at face value. We looked at it. We worked at it, we studied, we spoke to people for and against, and we made our, made our comments. And we made our changes rather. As I said, this has been a culmination of three years. This wind project was started back in eighteen, is when they first came in here. This is not a new issue, this has been going on for four years now. This is not anything we've done quickly. We took a very serious approach with this, as we do with everything. This is, this is a very serious thing that affects many people, and we didn't think there's something that deserved to be just glossed over and done quickly. So we did. We took the advice of some of you all, as well as the ladies from, from Skyler County that came down and visited with us. And I believe all of their recommendations from that first meeting, we actually got in there, the biggest part of them anyway. Throughout this process, we've made changes. We've upped the setbacks, regulations. We've made failsafes for locals who are wanting to get to their cattle, things like that. We've made requirements for notices of road closings, timeframes of who needs to be notified, including 911 dispatch, emergency services, post office, as well as our local reporter to get the information out best we can, so everybody knows they have time. Are there gonna be disruptions if this project continues? Yeah, there will be, there will. Are there gonna be times when the roads are bad? Well, there are. Oh, I feel confident that we have an excellent agreement that will remedy those issues as they come up. And I feel confident that our county roads will be in better shape afterwards than they are now. Hey, you can roll and scoff your eyes, scoff, roll your eyes and make noises all you want, but that, I feel confident.
The road's a number fixed from the A taxi line.
I'm speaking. I feel confident, after spending this many, much time on this, and through all the, all of the research that we've done, have done, all the experts we've talked to, this is a good agreement. There's also been an issue brought up about the $500,000 discretionary thing for, for unforeseen expenses. The reason that was put in here was because during one of our meetings with all of you sitting here, not all of you, but a good majority, it was brought up that if we had to hire somebody to watch the contractors, make sure they didn't get on anybody else's land, or if we had to hire engineers to do road work, to supervise, make sure things are going the way they should, that it was, the concern was that county taxes would have to be paid for them. It was brought up in this office specifically for that. Nobody thought that the county should have to cover that expense. We, we agreed, and so we asked for it. And we got the way it has to be used, we can read it in the agreement, it spells it out in there. The way it has to be used is for any unforeseen. We have to hire an attorney. We have to hire an engineer, any professional service. We have to hire somebody to drive around and make sure the roads open. We have that to draw up. What's not used can be donated to an organization or, or whatever. It's pretty open-ended on, on what it can be used for afterwards, but it will be utilized in a manner befitting of county operations and consistency with our county operation. Taxes were brought up for this as well, which don't really pertain specifically to this agreement or goal. Tax revenue that will be generated is based off the laws in the state of Missouri. The law changed in, I believe it was 2021 regarding taxation of wind farms. They're based off of a cost approach with a sixty-seven and a half percent abatement on day one. And that is through the life of the project, so it'll be at that, or three, and that's a thirty-seven and a half percent, I believe, is what it, is what the tax valuation would be based on actual costs. And that'll continue through the life of the project. That's based off the state of Missouri. That's not something we created. It's not something from an enterprise zone, it's not based on a production model. It's based on the state of Missouri's regulations on how wind farms are to be taxed, is what it is. I've heard multiple times concerns that, well, that won't actually come in, they won't pay that. Well, it's pretty much guaranteed. If you get a tax bill, you're gonna pay. Taxes are taxes, two guarantees, tax and debt. We all gotta do it. Let's see, you know, revenues are what they are. That's not the reason that we're here today to even discuss this. We're here specifically to take up the development agreements that we've spent time on. I know there are many of you in the crowd right now, thanks, and we don't care about any of the comments that we receive. I'm sorry, I feel like, we do, we looked at every single one of them, every single one of them. I know you'll never believe them, you'll never agree with me, and that's fine. But I know that we've been transparent through this entire process. This entire process has been open for everyone to be a part of. Every part of it could have been closed. I refused to do so because I thought citizens of this county needed a voice in this as we did it. We allow you to have a voice through this process, and I think that's the right thing to do. It forced, forced things to slow down, so we had time to take looks at things. We had time to research and talk with others, and we did. This has probably been one of the most difficult processes I've ever been through in my 12 years in this office. We've, we've gone through a lot. I've never had the level of, just how and how disrespect that I've dealt with throughout this process. I've been publicly accused of taking money from these people. I've been publicly accused of having secret meetings and making secret deals without the commission's approval. I know, there's a lot of you that aren't gonna believe that. It didn't happen. I've had meetings with people, I do have meetings with individuals. I take phone calls. Plus, Luther's saying he's sitting in this place one day, because that's how business is conducted, and that's how County Commission works. The presiding commissioner is the liaison between the commission and everybody else. That's the job. That's what I do, and I will continue to do so. I can't believe, begin to even describe how disheartening this whole thing's been. People I've known my whole life accused me of being a thief, a liar, a cheat. It's very discouraging, very discouraging. And honestly, makes you wonder if I'd ever do it. Why, why would anyone put themselves out there for this ridicule constantly? I do it because I care about this county. We spent the time on these because we care about this county, all the people of this county. Not one side, not the other, not haves, have-nots, the people of this county. This is a small fraction in this room right now, a lot of people in this county. And our job is to protect the citizens of the county and the county's interests. I think we've done that throughout this process, to the best of our abilities. It'll never be good enough, I understand that, but we've done the best that we possibly can. So, I do thank you for your comments. I do appreciate all the comments we receive. Some of you stated before, it'll never be enough unless it's just all out banishment as such, and I tried telling you, and I'll tell you again, we do not have the authority to do that. So, with all that said, any other comments? Ronnie? We're here to take up today Order Number 22-1017. I'll read it in title only if there are no objections from either of you. Twenty-two dash ten seventeen, the resolution and order of the Knox County, Missouri County Commission, authorizing and approving the commercial wind energy project development agreement, Northeast Missouri Wind Road Maintenance Agreement, and the decommissioning agreement, all by and between the County Commission of Knox County, Missouri, and Northeast Missouri Wind LLC, and authorizing officers of the county to execute the same. I entertain a motion for Order 22-1017. Seeing none, I will make the motion to take up and approve Order 22-1017, authorizing the County Commission to execute the commercial development, road use, and decommissioning agreement. Call for vote, all those in favor of passage and adoption of Order 22-1017. Say aye. Opposed, nay. Nay, sad. And the order is rejected. Thank you.
We need to set up a meeting sometime, so we can kind of go over a couple of things.
Thank you.
Thank you for making it public.
We appreciate it. As always.
People may remember they voted for Great Energy years and years ago, they're not here by accident.
Question, are you guys prepared for Amrin to take over this project? Ronnie, what is your, uh, what's your reaction to the possibility of them selling this project to Amrin? Was that...
It's their project, they can do whatever they want with it. We have no say in what they do with the project.
Do you think that if Amrin were negotiating with you, you guys would have gotten the contract this far, as far as, um, all of the concessions you were able to negotiate for these agreements?
I think we're, I think we're here to do the best that we can for the county. Uh, there's things that have been said throughout the, uh, throughout the meetings.
If you would take aside conversations out in the hall, we still have business to conduct here.
If, uh... I feel like there's a couple of issues with the contracts, um, based on prior meetings, things that have been said, things that weren't done, um, things that were requested and never brought, um, that we have not seen yet. I feel like we should be able to see those things, that they have not been brought.
Do you expect them to stay, to, you know, keep pushing forward for this project? Or do you expect them to sell?
Only they can tell you that. I can't tell you what someone else is going to do.
So, is this it? So is this, is this over?
Uh, it's over. I mean, it's not over. I think, I think we are really close, there's just a few things that we have asked for that they have never brought to us. And it would be nice to kind of see some of that moving forward.
Would that be like the runway...
The runway thing, uh, that was something that they told us that they would get with the landowners and work out something that would benefit them both. That was acceptable to both. That, that hasn't been done. If there was a way to see and get with them, to see if there is even the possibility of having a term on it in that two thousand, or maybe it's gonna be, you know, four thousand for a term. If we could sit down and kind of go over and then put that in the contract for that setback, there's no reason that we should limit it to just a two thousand foot off of a runway, if we have more space there to work with. If we could go over, you know, the possibility...
So why did you guys, okay, I'm, I'm just kind of trying to understand like what we're even doing here right now, if the contracts weren't ready to your, uh, to the commission's, you know, readiness.
Well, it was, it was based to have the public comment and then a hearing for it, was what this meeting was established for.
First possibility to vote. Okay. Luther, are you worried that, um, this project is gonna be sold to Amrin and you'll have to go back to the drawing board?
No.
You're not, you don't think Amrin would be interested?
There's nothing I can do about that. I just think there's a couple of things that we need to work out before we finalize the contract.
So, would you say your decision is ma, your mind is made up, you're not gonna vote for an agreement with the wind company, or you're...
I'm not gonna say that, because I'm not for them, I'm not against them. But there's just another couple of things that I want to talk about before we sign the contract.
Do you have any idea when you'll be ready to talk about the contracts again?
Depending on when we get to talk about it.
So no? Not yet?
We've got to set up a meeting with, uh, Monty.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna shut it down. Are you worried that Amrin is gonna take over this project?
I don't know, I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't know what's gonna happen with any of them, just... I can guarantee it's probably not gonna be good, but...
Okay, so when you talk about other things that you guys, there's just a couple of things left that you want to look at before you come back to the table?
Yep.
So when is the next possible opportunity to vote?
Uh, it just depends on when we're gonna sit down and have a meeting with them again. Um, that's been, uh, part of the reason why it's been so long the process. When we go, you know, five months without, you know, having a meeting with them, or three months or, you know, between meetings, uh, the sooner we can sit down with them and kind of go over a couple of things, uh, just to fine tune, to better understand, uh, then the faster we can bring it up to a revote. If they get on the agenda for Friday or next week, you know, um, if we can sit down and just kind of fire out a couple of things, then we can bring it to a revote.
So are you ready, ready to sit down and have these conversations and, and bring it to a revote?
Yeah.
And you are too?
Yeah.
Okay. So that could be as early as Friday?
It is Friday.
Depending on their schedule.
Okay, well, I mean...
We don't have a vote anytime soon, because if we gotta negotiate further agreements, it'll...
Has to go back to the lawyers?
Vote as soon as Friday, it'll be several weeks out at this point.
Okay, and have you guys heard of any rumblings of other companies interested in this project if Kurt Dill decides they want out? No?
Sure there are, I mean, that's how it goes, they can just allow their land leases to just dry up, they, I mean, that's, that's how these projects work, they, the land that's in the leases, they'll sell that, they'll sell paper to another company if they decide to do that, I don't know, that's, that's their... But it's the way the agreements that the landowners sign or set up, they can transfer between any, any company that, uh, that owns, whoever owns their lease.
Okay.
So, it's, uh, I don't know, it could go either way, I'm not real optimistic on how this is gonna play out at this point, honestly.
That's a quote. Gentlemen, thank you. I will see you later. Leave this on, is there, are there people still in the hallway?
Hi. There was.
Watch your step.
There's a few still out there, I think.
Hey! You're live.
So, um...
You're live, I'm live, so if you're talking about something you don't want on live TV, don't say it while I'm standing in here. Hey Les, do you want to interview?
I don't think so, Echo.
Okay.
I just wish they would've answered the questions that they asked and, uh... To say that I'm happy with the outcome, no, I'm not. It needs to be compromised, we need to come together on some of this stuff and, and, uh, be more open with it, I think, anyway.
Are you for the, you know, wind coming into Knox County? I just had my camera in your face. Yes, I'm live, I'm live. Okay, I'm gonna shut this livestream down. I'm Echo Manjes for the Edana Sentinel and the Nemo News Media Group. We were just here at the Knox County Courthouse where the commission took up the wind project. And I'm just gonna call them agreements, there's actually a number of different, um, I believe there's three different contracts, they've kind of gotten parted out, things like the road use agreement, to which they took up and voted down. It was taken up by Presiding Commissioner Evan Glasgow, it was voted down by Eastern District Commissioner Ronnie Leckby and Western District Commissioner Luther Green. Both say they do not think this is over, they think there could be another vote as early as Friday, uh, with the caveat that if there are more negotiations that have to go through the lawyers, according to, uh, Glasgow, then that would take longer as they will have to be vetted by those, both sides' legal counsel. So I'm gonna go ahead and shut it down for now, thank you so much for watching.